All right. We'll give them time to sit down, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
He's not moving quite as fast yet.
I know. Total need everything.
All right, call a meeting order. The mayor and all six commissioners are present. Item number two, at commissioners' request, discuss any items of concern on the regular session agenda of January 7th, 2020.
So, Fund 10, Department 955, it's assets and projects. There's two items there. I just kind of was interested. Guarantee abstract property purchase, is that what we paid for the property, $21,000 at 1718 West Randolph?
Yes, well, I can answer that question. On Randolph, between Van Buren and about Johnson or so, there's a median of houses that someday, 10 years down the road or longer probably, the city's going to do a road project through there. So, houses that come up for sale at an opportune price like that, we're making an effort to purchase as they come up.
I remember that was an item on the agenda and we accepted that. I just, it threw me off was writing a check to guarantee abstract, so.
Yes, for the closing.
Escrow.
The house was $20,000 and so the closing cost would have been about $1,100 bucks.
Okay, and then what is Allied Broadcast Group, a switcher system?
I think that sounds like 911 stuff. Is that what that is?
No, that is our communications department.
The flight department? I'm sorry.
That's for the communications department. When they record all of these meetings, you know, you don't see them in the council chambers anymore. They're offsite at the media center and that equipment needed to be replaced. Instead of having two switchers now, we just have one unit that we can do everything from the media center.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Derek?
Well, there was, but I can never find them when I'm looking for them, so I'll ask privately if I need to.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Item number three, update on Col Lake water supply construction manager at risk.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
We're here again to give you a little update on where we are. The things that we'll cover is we'll do our standard update and then I'll give you just a little bit of information on the pre-GMP work with the construction manager. David Burkhart with Garni is here in case you'd like to ask any more questions of him.
Michael? Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Let's start with our land acquisition update. You'll note that we have delivered 217 offers of the 230 that were anticipated. Approximately 50% of the overall anticipated offers have been accepted, so that's a very good milestone to be at. We're not there yet, but certainly proud of where we're at, given the number that we have acquired in the timeframe that we've done so. Just also want to update you that we've got 17 that have been handed over to the city for bridge team support. Just a few in line. I think there's a few more that this slide will be populated with at our next update. Just a handful more of those will be put into that camp. The stars.
Before you leave that, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
It looks like you've got 100 between 115 and, well, it's a little more than 100, 115 left that are kind of hanging out there. Are those, what's holding those people up? That number hasn't moved in a couple of months.
Yeah, they're still in this negotiation phase, back and forth with damages being negotiated.
So, they're actively working 115 or so?
Yes, yes.
And they are talking to them on a regular basis? Is that how that?
As often as they will allow, as the landowner will allow.
And additionally, we had several owners who really wanted to wait until the new year before we did any closing and actually cut checks. So, we brought all the checks back to clear her paperwork and her files and then reissued those checks.
Okay.
So, yes, it has been a delay, but that's really most of it.
There's also a lag time on this because, as you know, there's several easements on tonight's agenda and I don't really know if those are captured in this update yet or not. My guess is they're probably not because you haven't accepted them yet. So, those numbers are going to continually be improving. And the number that I look at is the easement's accepted number and that, I think last time reported to you, it was like 93 or something like that. So, there's some movement. Smith Roberts comes in frequently and visits with the team and about their progress and so we expect to continue to make progress, moving towards 100%.
Okay.
And let me add one more thing. There are a couple of easements that are held in trust for the honkas. BIA will not release those until we get done with the NEPA, so those six parcels will stay until July-ish. I mean, we've already done with them, with BIA. All indications are they're happy and satisfied and so they'll stay there until the NEPA's done.
Happy with the money.
Yes.
Any suggested changes to this slide to make it more clear?
No one?
Okay. This slide represents where those 17 that are requiring city bridge support are located, approximate locations along the pipeline. If that number continues to grow, we may modify this graphic a little bit. Those stars represent a couple of miles of property that's not realistic, so we might go to a smaller dot or something, make sure you guys can still see it, but hopefully we don't have a whole lot more. This is where we're at today, still in Phase 3. We've completed the survey. We have, as we just reported, about 50% complete with the acquired land. I'm going to ballpark the environmental permitting at about 90 to 95% complete. It's out of our court. It's resting with the Corps of Engineers. There'll be a public comment period that'll still need to occur, but we're just sitting and waiting on their comments so that we can provide responses. Final design has commenced. We've received formal notice to proceed on the full final design and I'll provide you some percent complete updates on a few slides here. C-MR selection is complete. There'll be some more reporting on that tonight and on the meeting upstairs. And then establishing the guaranteed maximum price, assuming that things move forward with your approval later this evening. That process will commence by bringing Garni onboard and starting the first phase of that work to look at our cost estimate and start working toward a guaranteed maximum price.
The item that we have upstairs is for award of a contract to Garni to do the Phase 3 pre-GMP work, and that's roughly 30 days worth of work, take our 30% design plans and provide us back a independent cost opinion. And before it gets to you, it'll be reconciled with what our engineer has told us they estimate the cost to be. And so I anticipate that once we get that information back, we'll have lots of conversations and then we'll bring, then we'll go on to the next phase. 30 days, 296. This agreement is linked with the other agreement that we plan on using for both the pre-construction services and the construction management services. Any questions for myself or for Garni?
Couple of questions for Garni. You have somebody from Garni, correct?
Absolutely. This is David Burkhart. He was with us last time.
I mean, I, this has been a really interesting process in following, in learning from Chris and folks at Garver, how we get here and kind of what these next steps are and what we're getting for $300,000 and how close we're getting to, how narrow that 30% design price estimate is to reality. We're at this point where we, you know, there's this gap. I know that what you provide at the end of this 30-day period, at the end of this pre-GMP is, if I understand it right, you go over our current 30% design and you're looking at it, make sure the assumptions that Garver has used are roughly accurate, that they are close order, the price is close order to what we believe will cost, and then it's all feasible. Is that more or less accurate?
It's very close. We will actually develop our own independent cost estimate and we'll go through that process. We have a team of estimators, two teams of estimators. So, the first process is sitting down with Garver and with the city to make sure that we have a complete understanding and the intent of what the drawings are. And then we'll work on a cost estimate. We also have a step in between where we do a peer review. So, our estimating team in the West will send that to our estimating team in the East and have a peer review process. The intent to that is to make sure that we're addressing everything and making proper assumptions and that it's a good estimate. Once that process is complete, then we will sit down again with Garver and review that estimate in detail to look for any differences between our estimate and their estimate to make sure that we have a thorough understanding of any differences, understand why it may be different, and then come to the correct conclusion. So, those are the several steps that we'll go through to make sure that it's an accurate estimate.
And those all address the cost estimate part. How much of what you do during this 30-day period is addressing the underlying feasibility of the project as designed and how much is addressing the cost of what's been presented?
Feasibility is not something that, and it may just be words that we're using, but feasibility is not something necessarily that we will review. We'll provide value engineering input, suggestions and recommendations. Can this be built and is there a better or more economical way to build it? That's the type of input.
That's a much better way of saying what I was asking. I guess what, just that the, am I correct, that part of what you're looking at is that the underlying basis of the project that has been designed is fundamentally sound, that it's all?
Absolutely. I think the word I was searching for was constructibility review.
There you go. Much better. Not that I have any doubt that Garver's done what they've, you know, they've done a good job. You guys have been great. I just, you know, I like that. I really like the second set of eyes on it. Whether we go forward with the next step of the contract or not, the value of having this second set of eyes up to this point is really appealing. And then I know there's that, the spreadsheet that was attached to the RFP, that all these numbers get plugged into. Is that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then we'll be able to see that and see, and you would have reviewed that spreadsheet as part of the RFP when you submitted it.
We did, yes, yeah.
And do you use a different model internally to come up with the same information?
We have our own internal estimating software that we've developed. However, our estimating follows by division, which is very similar to how that spreadsheet was broken out.
So, you don't have to take something wildly different and then turn it into this? Okay.
No, sir. The end result is a very similar format.
Okay, great. And I think the last question I had is, is what, I know this is a tough question, but to define, what I'm trying to get is how close, what's your confidence level with your 30% design number? Are you, when you come up with a 30% design number at this point, having looked at what they have, having looked at every other word, all the other work we've done, are you, do you look at it and say, this is pretty close, plus or minus, you know, whatever? I've got a 90% confidence that this number's going to be right within this margin of error. What's your, I mean, what do you shoot for?
Yeah, so as I've said before, a lot of that depends on the quality of or how far developed the plan set is, as far as how confident we can be. I'm confident at this point with the experience that I've had with your engineer and where I believe the design to be, that it's going to be a very thorough Level 1 or 30% design set. So, I would have a high level of confidence that our estimate is going to be extremely close. That said, the design is not final at the 30% level.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So, there is a margin, but that margin is something that will be discussed as a team because we will identify whatever unknowns or whatever potential unknowns there are, attempt to assign a value to that and make that part of the total number so that we know what that range is and we identify that range.
I think the two things that when we come back in however long, assuming we approve this contract tonight, and I don't see reason we wouldn't, but assuming we come back in 30 days or 45 days or whatever the actual time is, the two things I'd kind of like to see, in addition to whatever you put together, is a really dumbed-down version of that confidence level. I mean, I want to be able, without having to go through, I mean, I love 35 tabs in a spreadsheet. I love that stuff. However, I'd really like on one side of the spreadsheet to have some, you know, a confidence level and a range. I mean, what are we looking at? Ballpark. And then the other thing I'd like to see is, I mean, what we have now from Garver, the 30% number we have from Garver, I mean, there's, it's not, I mean, they hit the 30% threshold a while ago, 18 months ago, two years ago, whatever the time period when that number came from. And to the extent you identify any market conditions have changed in the interim, I would be interested to know where the price change is, where the, where what you come up with varies from Garver is based on a change in the market and where it's based on a disagreement with their analysis. And I don't think that's really spelled out in that spreadsheet. I don't think that's really provided for, but that will be useful for us if there's some, not with every little nickel and dime thing, but if there's anything really big, you know, if the, well, the cost of pipeline's gone up 10%, I'd like to know, you know, how they got so far off, whether it was a wrong assumption or that's just what the market has done in the last two years.
Absolutely. And that will be part of the process and part of, again, when we complete our estimate and sit down with Garver to review that, we'll be looking as, you know, line by line as much as possible and address those significant items and detail potentially what.
And you can explain it to us as non-engineers, except we often dumb it down as much as we need to. Awesome.
Good.
That's all I got.
Good, good question. Thank you. Thank you.
Michael?
Okay. Thank you, David. In the event that their contract is approved tonight, we look forward to coordinating with Garni and collaborating toward a solution from a cost standpoint, a scope standpoint, a schedule standpoint, so that you guys can stay on track with what you have intended to do all along. Just a quick update on the design progress. We're about 40% complete with the intake. We've progressed the pipeline to approximately 40 to 45% complete. The water plant is still holding at about 30% complete. There's been some work that has progressed on that, I think rightfully so. We're trying to hold up just a little bit in the event that we do get Garni onboard to have their input on some of the more complex issues associated with the water treatment plant. And the Chestnut Water Main is progressing at about 40% complete. Real quick, look at the schedule and I don't intend to go through every one of these. As normal, I just want to draw your attention to some of the key drivers. The NEPA process is still continuing to drive the critical path. As I reported earlier, that ball is in the court of the Army Corps. And assuming that things move forward with approval tonight, we're looking at establish guaranteed maximum price at the end of July.
That easement acquisition bar really is going to stretch to July, is that what you said? It's not going to stretch to April 14th, but if we're holding off stuff until the NEPA's done, it's really not April, it's July?
This is progressing independent of the NEPA process?
Well, I thought you said that some of the easement acquisition was?
There are certain parcels that we cannot close on formally.
Right.
But, so yes, that will slide a little.
Okay. So, I just, we shouldn't expect to be done with easement acquisition until we hit that threshold?
It should be all but the six.
Okay.
Is the goal.
I love your optimism.
Yeah, somebody has to have it.
My mistake, Ben. Yeah, you're correct. That will move for those last agency-held issues. And that completes our update for tonight, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Everybody have any questions? Very none, thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item number four, update on new City of Ina website.
Greetings, Mayor, Commissioners, and visitors. Talking a little bit about our new website that we have been designing in the last year. Let's get right back into it. So, the last redesign was around 2010 and we decided to do a new website to decrease the clutter, to give it a more model of, this is a current website, of course, and to reduce the number of pages and to make it more service-oriented, which we'll explain a little bit more later. We did research and data in these areas, community survey, map report, usability report, and website analytics in order to develop what we would do for the new website. So, with the community survey, we found out that most of our, majority of the people that visit a website between these ages, 55, 64, and 35, 44, the top two categories. And they were most often looking for specific information, so service-oriented stuff. And these were the top reasons for them visiting, utility payment, trash collection permits, jobs, meetings, and updates, news of that nature. And with the survey, the difficulties they saw with the site was contact information, department contact, maps, and how to submit things online. They seemed to agree that, they said it was easy to use, but they wanted a city directory with the city council more discoverable, like in-your-face or easy to access, so they can call their commissioners.
Everybody's got my number.
So, with the heat map results, this is how heat map looks. It tells you the clicks, the, why does?
Is this doing it?
Okay. It shows you where they're hitting mostly, clicking on mostly on the front of the website. And we just realized that it's just too many things there to get their attention, so they'll just use a search box, even though many times, half of the times, like there's no map on the front, but it would be there, but it's just so much information that they would just search. We did a usability report. Issues were that, and usability report means we had people across the United States and others that never came to the site to do, they had like 10 questions, say, try to find a utility bill, pay your utility bill. They'd go to the website and try to do that. This is the information that came up with, that there was too many options in the navigation, it was outdated look, there were broken links, there were not clear call to actions, you know, like pay utility bill. And they think, thought we should organize the homepage, reduce the number of buttons there, and identify the major task that most people that are coming here that they want to do. Those don't have to search for, just go to the front page and do it. Our web analytics study, it covered a year, basically. I'll tell you the number, users was 113,000 that year and over half of them were new users, which meant that they had never, you know, returning users, somebody who's come to the page from that device before, whether it be a phone or laptop or what have you. They've come there before, but a new user, they have never visited there before. And these were the top pages we found were using desktop and tablet, smartphones, service-oriented type of things. Now, I'm going to talk about the new additions to our website. We're currently working on a new meeting and agenda portal, our current one. This is the meeting page. And in the future, within the next month or two, cross your finger, we'll have this page, or similar page, it's still, it's not going to be exactly this look, more pictures, better pictures probably, but you'll be able to see the live stream of the council meeting here directly. You'll see the agendas and meetings here.
Will the, sorry, the search bar, will that search like the content of an agenda as well?
Yes, it will.
So, if we, you know, if you put Metal Lake on there, it'll show up when we talked about a Metal Lake Park thing in the agenda?
Yes, you can search it, yes.
That's awesome.
Here.
And also, I think also you'll have some buttons on the website. I think you're going to show them or you're going to show them. There's big buttons.
Yes, we'll go get to that after this, yes.
Like buttons.
And so, also with the new meeting agenda software, this will be the page, this will be the video playing, this will be the agenda on the left side, and down here, the votes when you're voting, those votes will come down here. They'll see who said yes and no. But that is a little bit more, in the future, this is a little bit more to two months away, this part.
Is it going to be slanted like that or is that just created?
Oh, this is just created.
Okay, just checking.
Now, this is, so this is the new website. This is the mobile app, or mobile, not mobile app, just the mobile version of it. It just, we made it to look like an app. And we have the top 12 most visited places on the website there, front in your face. So, you can do, and then you can always go to this little green little button here to go to other places on the website. But the top 12 where everyone was, when we did the usability reports, this is what they want to do. So, on their phone, they want to go ahead and pay your utility bill, they want to go solid ways, search a warrant, that kind of thing. And on the website, we have the six, top six. But then we have this where they will be able to drop down, I want to apply for this, and then it'll direct them to that place. So, with the new website, we're going to have, we have a responsive design, which I'll show you, which actually means it automatically adjusts according to what you have, whether it's a mobile phone or tablet or lap, you know, laptop or desktop. We have a hero image, and this is what you call a hero image in the background. If you notice on the old website, we had an image there that took up space, that just took up space versus things on top of it that you could use, which made you had to go farther down and scroll down to see things. So, now we have the hero image. We have content within the hero image on top of it. Search bar, be searchable. And we have, this is what we call the service founder. This is what we call the service finder. So, any service you're looking for, they have a dropdown menu for it. We have a new calendar and news widget, and we're going to, we have a pull-out service city directory right here, and I'll show you that. Camera here, just go through the pictures if you want to see a different picture scrolling. And we have fire and police things also, and I'll show you those colors. So, live meeting, this is currently for the meeting agenda, you would go to ina.org-meeting currently. In the future, you may go to those, both these two websites, ina.org-meeting and ina.org's live, to both stream, see the streaming and the agenda. But currently, to see the streaming of this meeting right now, you'd go to ina.org/live. In the future, you can go to either one. The reason why, because we haven't finished our meeting agenda, so those are two separate pages currently. Before we have questions, let me get the, let me show them, physically show them. I'm going to get up because I'm just going to utilize this. So, if you see, when you talk about responsive design, it's going to, you see how it changes? It thinks I'm on a? It thinks I'm on a, that's what you call responsive design. The old websites would stay like this no matter what, and you you'd be going for days trying to find information. But this is what what responsive design, it uses percentages, percentages when it, when we do, do the coding behind the website to let you know, this should be here, this should be here. Okay. Now, here's the, I can't see the rest of this screen. I guess it's not big enough. Let me do this. As you see, the search bar moves up there, so we can come here and see the, I think it's a little too big. I don't know if there's anything you guys want to see, but, oh, I said, I know, the fire, fire and police, I'm sorry. That's what I was coming to show you. So the fire has their own color. They wanted the charcoal look of burntness. So the red, the fire red. So that's why those are.
And police is the color of drugs or what? Just asking.
The the usual blue.
Oh, okay, very nice, very nice.
Traditional.
Yeah.
But they're pulled down, it's yellow.
Is there an easy to scroll through directory of city staff? The the thing I use most office in the web, off the website and have the hardest time finding is the, everybody's like phone numbers and email addresses.
Contact us is where I go.
Yes, it'll be up here in the, at the top. And and actually, I might move this staff directory there, and you can go through this and by the department, by name, by whatever.
That's easier.
And it'll also be on the right side, which I'm not sure why this is, it's not working on this one.
Low resolution projector image.
Can't see. But we'll have a pullout, which I, which I showed you on the PowerPoint. We will have that on there, resource PowerPoint. We'll have this pullout on the right side. Get to it. We'll have a pullout here, and the service directory will be here on the left, right.
So on the medallions, that's what I'm going to call them, your little icon. Then it says, I want to apply for, so they can apply for being on one of the boards, a vacancy that's available. Is that where you would do that? Can you apply for a, rent a pavilion in one of our parks from that location?
We'll have a lot of other things up here. We're still building it.
Which one would?
So what, you first choose what you want to do. I want to apply, find, get, report, reserve, you know, you have different things. If I want to, I want to pay, then you pay what? Traffic ticket. Then you click on it, it'll go to that website. So you you first have to pick what you want to do. I want to get what?
So it's step one, two, three.
Yeah. Step one, two, three.
Segment one, two, three, okay.
And we're still building this, so I heard some things that, yes, I'll put that on there.
Well, I like your medallions. I think those are sl, I looked at it earlier in the week, and I was very pleased with what you're aiming for.
Any more questions?
He he likes the word medallion.
Don't confuse him.
Yeah.
It's a steep learning curve.
Are there any more questions?
No, good job. Thanks, Derek. Appreciate it.
When do you think we'll go live?
Oh, sorry. Well, the plan is to go January fifteenth, next week, it's Wednesday.
Good. Thanks, Derek.
Okay. Item number five, discuss revised tobacco and vapor orders.
Okay, this is just an exciting deal. We have, are making some changes to be consistent with state law about the vapor and tobacco and, but, and I was planning on putting it on the next agenda, it just, it it's gotten very complicated, you know, like there's a definition of proof of age and complicated definitions about what a vapor product is and also, you know, a transaction scan and a transaction device and a defense. But I was planning to put it on the agenda for next time, but I may wait because of the federal special signing exemption thing that President Trump did, which he has raised the smoking age to twenty-one and the vaping age to twenty-one in a executive order. And so he's, he has announced that statewide, you know, nationwide, the, it's twenty-one, which, great. The only thing is that we follow state law and we don't follow federal orders.
Executive orders don't.
Exa, yeah, exactly.
Absent legislation.
Yeah. So I thought, we'll, I'll see what the state of Oklahoma is going to do. Are the feds going to preempt and say it's twenty-one in something that is a statute? Or is the state going to jump on board the twenty-one other states that have said that it's twenty-one? If so, then I can just change it at one time. If it's slower, I may bring this in because I would assume we would just alter the proof of age definition to be twenty-one years or older.
Is this going to create any issues for law enforcement in town? Waiting, is our waiting?
Well, I mean, it's, we're, no, because an executive order doesn't really, an executive order doesn't really apply until it's a law. Now, if we wanted to jump out there, we can just go and do twenty-one. But but normally, we follow state law and we don't, we don't jump out before the state jumps.
Does this have to do with children caught smoking or purchase of tobacco products?
Well, possession. This ordinance is possession and purchase or gifting.
So who's going to get fined if they don't have a job, they're in junior high, high school, smoking, the parents?
Oh, okay, well, when kids are arrested for vaping or possessing or using, they go to municipal court and we've got a whole system. I mean, you know, they can do community service, they they can get counseling, we check to see if they have jobs. It it, yes, sometimes the parents pay, but often we have, we we can get the kids to be doing something. You know, they can, they pick up trash, they they can go to nonprofits to do community service. And they get, bring their grades in, that sort of thing. It's, you know, we are mindful that it is expensive for the parents.
It's going to keep a lot of people busy.
A lot of people what?
Busy. Necessarily. I mean, I know we're protecting the children, but that's creating a lot of work for officers and everyone else.
Yes, but we've, we've had the ordinance on tobacco and va, the vapor system. We're just updating it, and if we weren't, I, you know, we don't have to have a juvenile municipal court. OJA and the county could do it. The police officers would just, I mean, you know, and I don't think realistically, the police are not, this is, they're not their number one deal. What happened is that when we probably did this vapor thing initially, the thought was that the vapor was, was all going, it was going to be tobacco or nicotine. And now it has expanded to other substances. So it is important, the the key thing is that it's important to be able to prosecute for vapor products that don't have tobacco in them. So that's really why the police asked me to revise the ordinance. Since they asked me that, the president decided it should be up to twenty-one.
Well, I think just bring it back like it is.
Okay.
So you can be mirroring state law, and then if.
Okay.
The state ever gets around to.
Exactly.
Or anybody actually, you know, passing legislation. I I have no problem bumping it to twenty-one, but it does seem like, I mean, it's easier to mirror state law.
Yes, yes.
But yeah, no, I mean, if we need to make some changes, let's.
Okay, okay. I'll just put it, put on next.
Change the date for the number.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That's all we have on the agenda, so we'll adjourn and meet upstairs at six-thirty.